Can you bring this meeting in order? Everyone, please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McCullough, can we get a roll call vote, please? I mean, roll call.
Mr. Seminero?
Here.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough here.
Mr. Baughlin?
Hi.
Mr. Sheehan?
Brother.
Mr. Wolf?
Yeah.
And Mr. Basil?
Here. Under announcements, there will be an executive session after this meeting to discuss litigation and negotiations. Under agenda edits, I wanted to add 17B, if that's okay with the board. I wanted to discuss the foundation a little bit and Bob New's report from our committee of the whole meeting. Are there any other additions to the agenda that anyone from the board would like to add? Mr. Kurtz?
I actually would like to add, last committee of the whole meeting, we discussed striking two policies, which we wanted to go back and look at. Item 14L, which was membership, and 14N, which was meetings. We want to take them back to policy review. There was consensus to, the committee of the whole, to remove these policies from discussion until corrections have been made and brought back to the board. They still appear on the agenda, and I think it would be good at this point to strike them so they can go back to the committee of the whole.
You can still leave them on as first readings and still edit them.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we can leave them on as a first reading, and if we have a meeting by the time, if the policy committee meets prior to the next board meeting, then we can make those edits and present them back to the board at that time for discussion. And if the board objects, then you can pull them.
Is that fine with everybody?
Yeah.
I have one.
Otherwise, if we take them off, then you're going through the process all over again.
All right, thanks for clarifying that. Well, we weren't entirely sure. I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, good question. Any other board member have any agenda additions or comments?
I would like to bring something up under new business. It's a discussion of a resolution or request to draft a resolution, like kind of listing our grievances with Harrisburg and sending it to our elected officials, elected and appointed officials. I'll bring it up under new business as a new item from the floor, or we, I guess I just told you now that I would bring it up.
Okay.
Seventeen C.
Seventeen C.
Seventeen C.
Okay, great. Okay, anyone else? Okay, moving on to procedures for public participation. Just as a notation to the members of public, if you're gonna get up and speak, we need you to sign in at the sign-in sheet at the podium where you put your name and address before you address the board. We will be limiting comments to three minutes apiece, and now is the time to come forward with comments from the public. You don't have to sit here through all hour, two hours, three hours of the meeting to discuss an item on the agenda. You can come forward now and have that comment when we have presentations by the public on agenda items. And I will make one other announcement before moving to that. This board has not yet met to discuss the Title IX issue. We will be doing that in executive session immediately after this meeting. This is what we had discussed at the last meeting. The board was gonna have an executive session at the voting committee meeting, and we'll be talking about that immediately after this. And we were getting that information to you guys first thing in the morning via the website or through Dr. Otto or through our athletic facilitator to answer whatever questions you guys might have at that time.
That was our question.
Okay, well.
About tomorrow?
Yeah, I'm sorry?
You'll discuss it today.
We're gonna discuss it right after this meeting, and we'll have a decision for you guys right after this meeting.
Title IX is what?
This is in reference to softball, middle school's girls softball program. There was a request to bring an additional coach because they felt that there was a Title IX issue there.
Title IX refers to gender equality.
Okay, any other members in the public have any comments?
No.
Okay, moving on. Dr. Otto?
Thank you, Mr. Basil. As we normally do, we have a number of recognitions for you this evening. We would like to recognize four individual students from our BCTC as students of the quarter, five different students for their participation in Science Olympiad, and two students for their work and success in our local spelling bee. I'm gonna turn over the description and the names to Mrs. Trainer, and we'll ask you to come forward and receive your award. Mrs. Trainer? Oops, sorry.
Sir, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I wanted to find out, the meeting after for the softball, is that closed or that's still?
It's an executive session, so it's a closed meeting.
Okay, so you guys had like, what, a lot?
But we haven't met as a board, and we haven't had our legal counsel here to have that conversation.
Okay, so they're here now?
Our legal counsel is here, and here's the board.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're on to item number seven.
So back again, we have three groups of students who'd like to recognize this evening, and I'm gonna turn that over to Mrs. Trainer.
Okay. One of the groups of students that we like to bring to you for recognition each quarter are those students who excel at BCTC. And so I'm gonna ask the following four individuals to come up to the front of the room, and that includes Cody Borington, Sean Cravada, Jackson Kitchell, and Christina Rowe. We have two. And these, those four names that I just read. Cody? Okay. Cody is student of the quarter for drafting. Sean Cravada is carpentry, third level. Jackson Kitchell is for communication media technology, and Christina is for occupational child development. Congratulations.
Hey, Cody. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you, too.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, our second group is a group of individuals that represented Daniel Boone with over 250 students at the, from 13 school districts in the Science Olympiad that was held at Georgetown University. And so we have brought some of the high-placing students here tonight. We have Jake, Rick, and Noah Unger, who was second in optics. Ed Kim and Matty Moyerkeen, second place in dynamic planning. And Ed Kim again, and Eric? He's not here either. Okay, third place in forestry. And while we're talking science, although unfortunately Ed is not here, for the board, if you did not see, Ed Kim was also mentioned in the voices section of the newspaper back on January 24th, and he was signed student of the month. And there were a number, I'll pass this around so you can see this during the meeting, a number of very nice compliments from the staff who nominated him to be signed student of the month. And I know he's been a regular over the last number of years here for math and for science success, and certainly his forte as he's been coming through Daniel Boone. So I'll make that a whole year college. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Matt.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the third recognition is for the Daniel Boone Spelling Bee champion and runner-up. The champion is Harrison Potts, and the runner-up was Zion Parrish.
Wow, I heard that.
And the winning word was Ben Dino, right? So, actually, and just for the information of the public, Mr. Potts, who sits on the board, that is his son, Harrison, that will be representing Daniel Boone, and then Harrison is unable to represent Daniel Boone. Zion will be our representative. And the competition is March 12th, and so they will be meeting at the Miller Center for the Arts at Redding area community college. And I understand he's studying.
Studying art.
As we speak. So congratulations to both of you, and we wish Daniel Boone well as we get to the next one.
You have to spell Daniel Boone first.
Mr. Seminero?
Yes.
Great job.
And Mr. Basil?
Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passed.
Oh, Ed Kim.
Okay, presentation by board members.
And also, we'd just like to mention, if you had a chance to see the newspaper today,
Do we have any correspondence?
No, I am down the street.
Okay. Mr. Kurtz, BCIU?
All right, this will not be nearly as long as my last BCIU update. We met, I believe, two Thursdays ago.
we had two young men in the community, Tyler Burns and Daniel Rightnower, who were recognized
I was actually a bit late, but I'll tell you what happened. It's included, if you get, I think the board receives the IU link, is that correct?
by the mayor of Harrisboro for their help in avoiding a very serious fire in the borough.
Does this part of it mail that out? All right.
So we'd like to mention them as well.
It's just, it's all included in there, but I'll summarize now.
Okay, great.
The BCIU board approved two initial budgets and two changes to initial budgets.
Moving on to routine approvals. It's recommended the board of directors approve the minutes of January 23rd, both
We also authorized an agreement with Albright Early Learning Center in Fort Brigg to provide
the school board meeting and the budget workshop, and February 13th committee of the whole
United Way subsidized childcare services.
meeting.
In addition, we authorized a solicitation bid for the purchase of buses for transportation
Okay, second? Any comments? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote?
contracts. Then we also discussed, and it's included in the IU update, we discussed Governor Corvitz's
I have a for A, I have a first from Mr. Sheehan, a second from Mr. Potts.
budget and his budget cuts, and BCIU funding will see a 5% reduction.
Mr. Seminero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
However, one component of what the BCIU does, the early intervention programs, will be
Mr. McCullough, yes? Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
increased by 4.1%.
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
And special education is flat funded, and while funding for services in non-public schools
Yes. Okay, do I have a motion for B and/or C?
B and C.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wolf?
is decreased by 5%.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Really, not, it was a very short meeting. I don't really have anything else to talk about.
I have a motion on the table for A, B, and C, from Mr. Sheehan first, second by
If you have any questions, you can feel free to contact me, like nothing else from the BCIU.
Mr. Wolf.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Kurtz?
Mrs. Hamel?
Okay, seeing none.
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes?
Mr. Wolf, BCTC?
Mr. Potts?
Yeah, we had our meeting last week, and we, the official budget is, well, the budget's
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
now official of the board voting on it, so now it's gone to districts for their individual passage. We discussed the transfer of entity plan for the teachers being furloughed now that the districts are taking back the math programs. So I believe, I understand that the school boards, participating schools, of which there are nine, and we're one of the nine, we have to declare whether we're going to have an open math position in our district. This pool of teachers, of which I believe there are eight, and they believe they're gonna have one remain in the BCTC for the Math 160 college course. The remaining teachers will go into a pool, and the districts that send the most percentage of students, if they have an opening, that district would have to receive the highest seniority teacher from that pool. Gets a little bit more involved that they can accept or they can reject it, if they go back into the pool, that essentially, and I think they mentioned that they were going to be asking the districts to declare whether they have open math positions shortly. I don't know what that typically is.
We spoke with Mr. McAmol on this, and if you want to touch on this during our curriculum instruction, that you felt you, I'm trying to refresh this, you felt you could do with your, the additional students coming in from there without actually having to put another math person on, correct?
Correct.
So we're not gonna have an opening?
Yeah, I'm not saying.
I'm just saying a few other things. We're gonna use existing heads, and we discussed that at the curriculum instruction committee meeting last month.
What happens is that the, if these, say, there's eight teachers in this place, they stay in the pool forever, if they're choosing to have to reapply, they'll stay in it, but until all of them are out of that pool, being consumed by those nine districts. So even though we may not have one this year, if there are two or three that are still not employed next year and they reapply, we would still take, whoever the districts are, we'd take the most senior person.
Wait, let's back, let's back that up. We're being forced to take the most senior person regardless of whether or not?
No, 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 just say we're, I'd say we're number one on the number, percentage of students that are sending to BCTC, which we're not. Okay, if we were, we would be forced to take the highest seniority teacher from that pool.
Say we get a teacher retire next year, a math teacher. Do we have to select somebody from that pool at all, or do we go out and hire?
If they're there, we do.
We have to.
It's a school code law. It's called transfer of entity. It happened many years ago when the districts took special ed back from the IU.
Regardless of the qualification of the teacher, I mean, if we're looking at budgetary things, and we get a teacher that retires, and we're gonna be forced to take a teacher that may increase our budget rather than that to decrease our budget?
Yeah, that potential is there.
Depends on being in law.
Can they, how does that work? Do we have any legal recourse? Because I can't imagine.
Apparently not.
Coming to tell us.
Transfer of entity actually means something in the school code. Mr. Subers, you could probably explain it better than I can.
Well, we would have to be absorbing the program back from, you know, the sending, and in that case, if there's teachers who have been furloughed as a result of the transfer, you know, the loss of that program, and we're hiring an employee to meet, you know, our needs based on receiving the program back, we have to.
But we're not hiring. Say next year.
Well, that's something.
If you're not hiring, it's a moot point.
I think you need to look into that, because if next year we get somebody retire and we're hiring a replacement teacher, we're not hiring a replacement teacher because of absorbing this program, we're hiring a replacement teacher for somebody retired.
Or if you need that teacher to staff your program again, and they're a math, and it's math.
We're already beyond year one. We've already staffed at year one.
It wouldn't matter.
It should be irrelevant for year two.
Wouldn't matter.
That question came up.
It wouldn't matter.
As long as they reup every year, they're in that pool.
Does the qualification of the teacher matter? Whether they teach geometry or?
Well, they have to be certified.
No, math is math.
Certified for whatever.
Pennsylvania certification.
I call it secondary math, secondary.
There's no designation.
They're eight in the pool, but one, possibly two, are gonna be consumed just by BCTC. And there's nine districts.
Where are we on the pecking order? You don't know where we are on the pecking order?
I don't know.
Interesting.
I could find out.
But the transfer of entity, just for history, for those of you that may have been around for it, I believe it was sometime in the 90s when it occurred. Mrs. Trainer, you can help me with that, that?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, even earlier, when special ed was taken back at the district level because the feeling was that it was too expensive at the IU level, so the districts decided to take it back, accept the money. And with that, there's probably a number of teachers in Daniel Boone now that came here in the special ed department via transfer of entity. Mrs. McCowsky's shaking her head. She was a special ed teacher at the time. So this is not a new concept at all. It's been in Pennsylvania law forever.
But, Dr. Otto, different than this experience, the previous one, they were all currently employed here. We just brought them on as Daniel Boone employees.
Right, right.
Whereas.
Instead of subcontractors.
We used to contract with the BCIU for all of our special ed needs, and what we decided to do, a number of districts, was to bring these employees on as Boone employees. They were currently here, we just brought them on as our employees. This time, we're bringing in people.
But it was under the transfer of entity rules.
At the BCIU rates.
You know, VR rate, but they would get credit for years of service.
Yeah, so again, we could, you know, we could bring in a 15-year person.
That was one of the questions that came up, that you think you're gonna have a budget savings because somebody, a lot of seniorities retiring, and you bring someone new in, it may not necessarily be the case.
I can tell you, without naming names, there are a number of school districts who are in this same position, and they are not happy about it, but it is what it is.
There's, I do have the detail of the transfer of entity plan, and it does cite the school code, Pennsylvania school code, that this was mirrored from.
Yeah, Section 1113 of the school code, right?
Right.
That's the Transfer of Entities Act, that's what we're referring to.
Okay. The last thing of note was, we had four students participate, and had, we had four, more than four students, but we had some students place either first or second in the district level. They had Skills USA, and we had the first student, Sarah Coleman, she's a health occupational student, she placed second. We had Lars Hol, in the building construction, he placed first. Hope I'm pronouncing it, sorry. Jimmy Reigner, he's in collision repair technology, he was the first place award. And Amanda Arms was in cosmetology, she also achieved first place. So that's at the district level, these students also would qualify to go into state level if they choose.
That's awesome.
And that's, that's all I have.
That's great. Any questions for Mr. Wolf? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Sheehan, do you have anything from the legislative?
Yeah, a couple interesting things come through, and for Mrs. Trainer's on top of the proposed change to the graduation requirements that just briefly, chapter four, that, and one of the other things is they moved the current changes from the 2014 to 2016 class. These proposed changes would take place in the 2017 class. I might understand they've already made some of the changes to the proposed changes, so who knows where they're gonna come with it?
It still will.
They're still trying to emulate, come up with some type of exam, very similar, again, from what I'm hearing, and I got a phone, I got an email, very similar to New York State Regents type of an exam that would be required to get official credit for a course, for graduation, and everything else. They've also confirmed several times now that where there was a gray area where Mrs. Penza mentioned, they change in the transportation formula, yeah, the change is there is no longer transportation formula. And basically, just to explain to the public, what used to happen was, you would put maybe a number of, you would put an amount in your budget, say a million dollars for transportation, and at the end of the quarter or year, at the end of the year?
At the end of the fiscal, it's actually based a year behind, so what we're being paid for in 11-12 is based off the 10-11 data, so essentially, at the end of 11-12, we would be filing, and what we would be getting in 12-13 would be based off of this year.
Yeah, you would right-size based upon actual, and you get that money, and that formula's gone. Basically, what you get is what you get. Make do with it, and if your transportation needs increased, too bad, you have to eat it. As well as social security and Medicare, in the past, as you had promotions and increased in incomes throughout the year, which increased your social security contribution and your Medicare contribution for your employees, that would be reimbursable. It's no longer, it's what you get is what you get. Live with it, doesn't matter whether your employees are being promoted and/or advancing in pay, that's the district issue.
So essentially, where there were formulas in place before, which allow for state reimbursement based on actual costs of the prior year, those formulas are now gone. You're getting a lump sum payment from the state, and they're saying, spend it as you will, and if your costs are higher than last year, whatever, then that's, you're just gonna have to figure out some other place to cut to make it work.
During the year.
During the year, right. So it just means that we have some more discretion in how we spend the money, but we may have less money to spend vis a vis the constraints that we have, transportation and contracts and things of that nature. Okay, more good news?
No, that's about it. I don't think we can handle any more.
Okay, under other reports, Dr. Otto and I had the opportunity to meet with Secretary Tamalas last Thursday night, about to be in at Reading, along with the other board presidents and superintendents from the Berks County Schools. And interestingly, he touched on Keystone exams, and he says that they are coming. They put them aside temporarily last year, but they are coming, you know, this year or whatever, I think it's the end of this year. They're bringing those back. He also talked about, you know, the budget and the transportation issues and things of that nature. He said, you know, look, at the end of the day, you know, 10 years ago, the state funded, you know, I think that he said the state, I'll give you the exact numbers, was something around $13 billion a year towards education. We have less students now than we did then, and we're spending $26 billion a year on state education. So we're putting more money towards education on a per-student basis than ever before, more than twice the amount that we were just 10 years ago, but we're not seeing the same results. The results are flat. We're not seeing any improvements in scores, and so that's something that's very much on the governor's mind, and something that they're gonna try to, they're trying to address. And they are also facing a multi-billion dollar budget shortfall again this year, as they did last year, and they did not provide us with any encouragement that. None. They expect to see that improve in the coming years. So this is going to be something that we're gonna be dealing with for quite some time.
Take, one of the concerns I have, and we get emails all the time with, of the DBTA and stuff, on eliminating property tax, eliminate property, casinos were supposed to eliminate property tax, and they realized that a large cough of money came in from casinos. We all, very few school districts opted into that, we were one of them. Then all of a sudden, there's such a large, all of a sudden, everybody's in it now, and we all get a little bit of money. They're talking about, you know, these other plans, and the concern is that, okay, they increase sales tax 1%. All of a sudden, they realize a large amount of money, oh, it's not elimination of property tax, we're gonna use it to plug other holes, and, you know, it's gotta stop sometime. And people in Harrisburg, I understand that, you know, Virginia decided they were gonna put a lottery, and the lottery's gonna, to benefit schools, and they passed it and they could not change it once it was in place. If we used the casinos' money, we wouldn't have property taxes right now.
Well, one of the things he did say was, you know, they recognize a lot of the constraints that are on school districts, and they've tried to free up some of those constraints with some of the legislation that was passed last year, so that we can deal with this. You know, obviously, the model, I'm gonna use his words, don't mind, feel free to correct me. He said, "The model that's in place doesn't work anymore because it's based on continued growth." Continued revenue growth at the state level, continued revenue growth at the school district level. When you have declining growth in revenues as a result of a recession or some other such thing, all these mandates, contractual mandates, whether it's Peasars or it's transportation or whatever it is, contracts with teachers and whatnot, those things continue to move forward, and they're unfunded because there's no revenues there. So they understand that there's a problem, and they're trying to address it, but obviously, it's a political issue that's gonna require a lot of compromise and a lot of work, so.
Yeah, I would just, I walked away from that, you know, you go into those meetings with a certain understanding, you think you're gonna hear good news, and you think you're gonna hear this, and you had to feel for the person in that position. It is really just an unenviable position to be in right now, to try to fund any program in the state, be it education, transportation, welfare, mass transit, whatever it is, there's just no money.
Well, actually, that's the other point I wanted to bring up, is he said that, you know, one of the, they had, I guess, a $3 billion budget deficit last year, and Harrisburg solved that problem by going to social entitlements and social welfare to, and make cuts there to bridge that gap. They didn't touch education. This year, education's, you know, was the one, you know, on the table, and they were surprised, they were actually very pleased that they were able to provide the level of funding that they did to bridge that gap. But come, come next year, you know, it's, there aren't too many other places. I think he said 80% of the state budget goes to social welfare programs and education.
Yeah, but again, I mean, let's not, let's put blame at where it goes, and take it from Harrisburg and push it right down to Washington, because if you keep giving money, you give stimulus money after stimulus money after stimulus money, that never repeats itself. And, I mean, I know we keep hearing, well, just because you got the money, you don't spend it. Well, that's not the way education works. If you get the money, you either spend it or you lose it. So if we get a million dollars, a million and a half dollars of stimulus money, and, you know, we get this increase in our budget, not knowing how much was stimulus and how much wasn't initially, and you use it, and you keep going forward, and you keep going
Yeah, I would just, I walked away from that, you know, you go into those meetings with a certain understanding, you think you're gonna hear good news, and you think you're gonna hear this, and you had to feel for the, for the person in that position, it is really just an unenviable position to be in right now, to try to fund any program in the state, be it education, transportation, welfare, mass transit, whatever it is, there's just no money.
Well, actually, that's the other point I wanted to bring up, is he said that, you know, one of the, they had, I guess, a $3 billion budget deficit last year, and Harrisburg solved that problem by going to social entitlements and social welfare to, and make cuts there to, to bridge that gap. They didn't touch education. This year, education's, you know, was the one, you know, on the table, and they were surprised, they were actually very pleased that they were able to provide the level of funding that they did to bridge that gap. But come, come next year, you know, it's, there aren't too many other places, I think he said, 80% of the state budget goes to social welfare programs and education.
Yeah, but again, I mean, let's, let's not, let's, let's put blame at where it goes and take it from Harrisburg and push it right down to Washington, because if you keep giving money, you give stimulus money after stimulus money after stimulus money, that never repeats itself, and, and I mean, I know we keep hearing, well, just because you got the money, you don't spend it, well, that's not the way education works, if you get the money, you either spend it or you lose it. So, if you get a million dollars, a million and a half dollars of stimulus money, and, and you know, we get this increase in our budget, not knowing how much was stimulus and how much wasn't initially, and you use it, and you keep going forward, and you keep going forward, and all of a sudden, you know, the stimulus money dries up, and guess what? We're still gonna give you the same amount of money, the state money we gave you last year, but it's a $2 million shortfall because the stimulus money dried, dried up.
He mentioned that.
Talked about that, too.
You just can't keep going in that direction, printing money all the time.
I think it's tough for us to, to be so dependent on, on the state, one of 500 school districts, depending on the state, you know, to help dig us out of a hole, I think the only way to really help ourselves is more on a community level than it is at the state level. Like, if I'm not mistaken, I think the, didn't the Economic Revitalization Committee meet today? You know, I'd be interested to see what ideas come out of there, I mean, I, I was always one to say, let's give, let's give tax incentives to new businesses to come in here, you know, we won't, we won't fix our problem today, but we can fix our problem five years from now.
We've actually done that in the past. We've actually done that.
Yeah, it's already been out in the dirt.
What's one problem we have?
Isn't it the Keystone opportunity?
Thank you. There is one, there is one, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying that's been done.
What is the, the offering?
Again, I'm sorry, that, that plan's been around. You were here, Mr. Basil, weren't you?
It's like 10 years.
Yeah, it's been here for a while.
We're coming up on the end of it, I wanna say maybe 2013 is when it runs out.
Yeah, it's coming up, but we've done, we did that five, six.
And we've talked about that at, at ERC level also, I think one of the issues that Chaz Lyons brought up, when, in Amity, and Amity's working hard to try to put things together to incent businesses to come in, they're trying to build a business park, they're trying, you know, and things of that nature, the problem is, the economy took a dive at the same time these plans are putting into place, and so, you know, he's...
I mean, Redding Hospital's gonna put an annex over there next to the post office on 662 or something, and the money dries, I mean, it just, it just doesn't...
Well, you know, I mean, that's a big problem, you know, regardless of how much the state can and can't, can't help, or the government can or can't help, you know, we're a poor community, we're a poor community, you know, we, we have to try to encourage growth in this community.
Agreed. Well, that was all I had, any other reports?
You're missing someone.
Yeah.
We had a nice dinner.
At least he was a straight talker, you know, he wasn't giving us any BS, so it was, it was straight talk. Moving on, buildings, ground, there's nothing there, financial approvals.
11A through F.
F?
Excuse me, can we, I'm sorry, here's the first, go ahead, do I have a second? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bailey, you're doing it, I'm sorry.
Do we have a second, Mr. Sermonaro? A through F? Okay.
Can you have a discussion?
Yeah, is there any discussion?
I have a question on item D, it says we've been required two votes.
Correct, I was gonna ask, so we take that out, that was my question, somebody put a motion before.
Yeah, with the exception of D.
So can I trade?
D, with the exception of D. Of an A through F, exception of D.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Kurtz? Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Sermonaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed.
Do I have a motion for 11D?
11D.
Mr. Kurtz and Mr. Shaheen.
Mr. McCullough, which is the first vote, the individual or the board?
Correct, so the board knows, there'll be two votes, the first one is the board, your board vote, the second one is your individual vote. The board, the BCTC, BCIU does require this, so again, the first one is your board, second one is your individual one. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, the budget is...
$1,762,000.
Is it flatter an increase over prior?
Flatter. We've had the same contribution, I think, for the past three years.
Okay, any other discussion, questions? Okay, let's go through the roll call vote, board vote first.
Board vote first, Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Sermonaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
And Mr. Kurtz? And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and now the individual votes.
Yes, first by Mr. Kurtz and the second by Mr. Shaheen, Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Sermonaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Moving on to item number 12, personnel approvals.
Well, A through D.
We have a motion for A through D.
I have one question.
Second.
We have a second, okay. That was Mr. Sermonaro.
Yeah.
Mrs. Hamel, you have a question.
With the cross-country head coach, were we going to talk about, once again, the assistant coach? Is that gonna be part of this, or is that a separate issue altogether? Does anyone see assistant coach in here anywhere?
My question is, why are we voting on a head coach for February 28th?
Is this a retroactive vote?
No, this is for...
This is for next year? Or is this for...
It says effective...
For a head coach.
For next year?
For next year. Close country's in the fall.
Right, close country's a fall sport.
Amory, is that one?
Well, isn't Mrs. Collier, Mrs. Collier?
Who's?
Isn't she here?
She's right behind you.
Yeah.
This is for next fall.
For next fall?
Correct.
Okay.
He's replacing Ali Kapunzi, and I just wanted to get a hearing as soon as possible.
Okay. My question is, why are we voting for four, D, F, G, and I, three months after the position should have been made effective? I mean, if this board's gonna decide whether or not they wanna have a individual and/or fund a certain position, and then these people have been acting in these positions since December 1st.
They can't cut it.
You can't cut it, they've already been, so they're gonna expect, and they have been being paid, I would assume, up to this point.
And that's very, number H is back to August.
Yeah, H is...
Yeah, H is back to August.
August 29th, that's like seven months.
First day of school.
Yeah.
Like, these things should come up to the board before they begin working these people.
Correct.
Otherwise, what is even the point in approval?
Or at least the day they're gonna, I mean, you can't go back that far, I mean, we've got three months on one, and what, six, seven months on the other.
Yeah, but they need to come to us beforehand, because if we had an issue with one of these individuals, we wouldn't be able to terminate them because, not, not terminate, not approve because they're already working for us.
Well, the, the extracurricular positions, the winter guard, there was a, there was a little bit of a misunderstanding of, and a delay in trying to get the total number of them, and we've corrected that problem, that won't happen again. We'll make sure they come forward in, in a more timely fashion.
Well, what was the issue?
They were looking to, Mrs. Trainer, if you wanna, I know she did some research on this as well.
There's a pot of money that's given for that position, and so, when the band director looks at how many individuals he would like to have with the different components of the position, he tentatively divvies out that money in proportion to the hours that they would spend, and so he then spent his time looking, I'll pick a number, for five people. He got four, had trouble finding the fifth, but didn't wanna bring the first four, because you always have to have the dollar figure on the agenda, and so, until he was either sure he was or wasn't getting the fifth person, he didn't send the stuff down.
But when did the fifth person get brought on?
If at all.
Again, I mean, that's the point, if that, I mean, that fifth person is, by the way, guys, I, I missed, it's B on the previous page. So there are five people here going back to December 1st, so at least by December 1st, that fifth person is doing their position.
Well, that's my point, I mean, he found everybody by December...
And we couldn't put them on, but he has now, he's been told for next year that he either send the package down or the individual doesn't work, so we corrected it for the...
Okay, I... Hold on, I guess I'm having a hard time with this, I mean, if, if the thing starts December 1st, and he's not finding people to fill the spots until, until when? When did he find all five people?
After December 1st.
Okay, but like, when, was it January, was it February, was it...
You're talking three months into the program, the program is almost half, should be halfway over.
After the second meeting in, it was in December, late December.
He found, he staffed this whole thing by December.
Somebody should be paid, not from December 1st, but from, say, December 28th or something, because they're not on...
No, 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 they should be paid when we approve them, correct?
Well, they haven't been paid anything yet.
The request is to ratify the...
They get paid at the end of the season.
They haven't been paid a dime yet, but when did they start working?
If he doesn't find them till December 20th, then why are we banning them back to December 1st?
Can I modify my motion, that we pull these five till we get that date?
I have another question, what if, Mrs. Trainer, what happened, or Mr. Zupers, I guess, multiple, what happens if we turn one away now? What happens if the board votes for all five and says no, what happens then? Now you're halfway through the season, and now what do you do? I'm just asking if you were, put in our position, and there's a candidate, or two candidates that some board members do not want, what do you do then? It's almost forcing our hand to accept the five people, or not these, any five, it's whoever you put on this agenda after the fact.
What was the staff last year? Was it four, five?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, I mean, my issue is, one, this is, it's backloaded, so you could sit there and say to yourself, okay, well, look, we're gonna hire people that maybe not be, to Mr. McCullough's point, may be approved by the board, but we're gonna have, we're gonna bring it to the board's attention after the season's over, or almost when the season's over, so it doesn't matter what the board's opinion is anymore, you're gonna pay, you know, these people are staffed there, that's number one. Number two, I think the second issue is, is we shouldn't be paying people who were hired, you know, probably started January 4th or 5th, effective December 1st, I mean, that's...
I have more of a concern with that than, than I do the others, because a lot of times these people are repeat, repeat...
That is true, but there are...
So I'm not as concerned with the fact that four of these people have been working since December 1st, the fifth started sometime after, and we're paying that person for a month that they didn't work.
But there could be an issue with the returning.
Correct.
Just because they were last year doesn't mean you wanna be in this year. It's not as clear-cut, it should be broad, should be at least the same month as the start date, if not before the actual start. I can't imagine that...
Well, these things should be coming to us in November.
Yes.
Well, I agree with you, I agree with you.
If we don't, how it should be for the future, if we don't get these before these people are expected to work, they can't work, because we were approving these people to work in the district without, like, same with volunteers, they need to be approved before they're allowed to begin work.
We're gonna correct that problem.
It's been corrected for next year.
Very good.
Has it been corrected for the balance of this year, too? I mean, obviously, we've got...
There's nobody else will come on that's...
Coaches, anything like that, that's coming up in the spring?
So I have a question, now, we, they traveled this weekend with people that weren't approved.
Your extra conversation at the executive...
The middle school thing, okay. Sorry, Mr. McCullough, could you say that again?
So in other words, they traveled and took students on a, on a competition without being approved by the board? Okay.
They had their clearances.
That's, that's one issue, that's one issue, but they were not technically...
We understand that.
Technically, were not district employees, correct, Mr. Zupers?
That's correct.
In this, in this facility, they made them teachers.
Well, they're not, I mean, but these aren't... Okay, not, okay, I'm not talking about, but I'm saying, they weren't, they don't have those reasons of this board.
That's correct.
Okay, that's my, again...
Now, Mr. Shaheen, you mentioned you wanna pull this until we have time to figure out when this...
Well, I made the first, whoever made the second one, I have to...
Wait, you're gonna pull those five?
What?
I'm sorry, the motion is to pull five.
I pulled those five, we found out which one started later, and then correct that.
Seven of them. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
They're jumbled up, they're not in...
B, C, D, F, G, H, I.
Well, C is effective February 28th, back today.
Okay, so this is bar...
Right, sorry, C is effective...
Okay, so Mrs. Barni, the correct ones, Mr. Shaheen, which ones do you under?
I, I wanted, I wanted, I wanted B.
Under two B.
Two B.
Three, 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 two.
D, F, H, and I.
B?
B, D, F, G, H, I.
Okay, so that's a total...
H has been working since the beginning of the year, was an oversight by the administration that he thought he had to get in there.
You still want...
Okay, we can leave H, because we're not worried about when H started, but one of the others started prior to the date that's on the...
So you're still pulling four, Mr. Shaheen?
What?
Four people.
Five. It's B, D, F, G, and I.
Okay, you have them.
B, D, F, G, I.
Who made the second, okay. Um, Mr. Kurtz, Mr. Sermonaro made the second, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, so board members, you...
Again, not, for nothing else, the liability puts a district in, from the standpoint of not being approved by the board to do what they're doing, and then...
Okay. I have another question about that, in 12. D, I'm assuming this is for...
It's an IEP.
Can I, could, could we put that in there, per an IEP, so that if anybody goes back and looks at minutes, the reason why we're doing it, we're doing it because of a student IEP?
Item D, you said, two B?
Yeah, letter D, and last one, D1, I'm sorry.
Oh, D1, I'm sorry.
Can we put that as per an IEP? Just so that, in case anybody looks back and asks why we're sending a teacher to a different district.
Well, we could include that in the minutes.
Yeah, but again, I'm just asking for clarification, one, my first question was, is that what it was for, second was, do board members...
Include it as part of the minutes.
Okay.
Because we don't approve the agenda, at the end of the day, we'll end up approving the minutes, so...
That's fine, I'm just asking a question.
Yep. That was, that was part of an IEP, that needs to be included as part of the minutes.
That's all I'm asking.
Okay, any other questions or comments on 12A through D? With the exceptions of two B, C, F?
C.
Huh?
Not C.
Oh, sorry, B, D, F?
G and I.
G and I. Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Sermonaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes? Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Do we need a formal motion to table those other items?
No, we pull them. No, we pull them.
We pull them. I guess, like, just before we let this thing go and move on, like, can, maybe you guys can sort of describe to us what, 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 what has changed so that this doesn't happen again next year, or? What's being done, I mean, this is all winter percussion, band and stuff like that, so I'm assuming, what conversations taking place with the band director and, and, um, Mr. McAmoy to address this issue going forward in terms of, of making sure these things hit our agenda before, before people start working?
Um, I didn't talk to him today, Mrs. Trainer did.
Uh-huh. Okay, um, Mrs. Trainer, what, what's the plan? How, how we get, how is this gonna change next year?
Anyone he has prior to the start needs to be in, and no, nobody will be added after the season begins.
Does that mean nobody's gonna work, even?
No, he'll just divide, he'll just use less staff, um-
So if he doesn't have them in by December 1st, whoever he's got, that's what he's gonna work with?
As long as they have all the paperwork that we need in my office, that's also been an issue sometimes, and so we'll hold people up because we don't have clearances or whatever.
I mean, if he decides he wants to have five people next year, he could just divide the money up, vote on four of them with the fifth to be added a month later or something, I don't think we have a problem with that.
But the problem with that is, if he never finds the fifth, then we have to bring them back to get reapprived. As long as you're okay with us bringing them back for just the money.
Well, again, I don't have a problem reapproving because he didn't find a fit person, I have a problem with going back and A, paying somebody for a month that didn't work, and B-
I'd rather come back and redo the money among the four than where they're not, or five, I think.
All right, we'll bring the money back for, or an adjustment. Sure, no problem.
Is this an issue in any other, I mean, I, you indicated this was an issue in the past, this is an issue not only with, with this particular, um, piece of the curriculum, any other pieces of it, and, no?
No, we don't, we bring people on in, um, in class type activities and such, we'll, we'll give, um, Mrs. Penza a dollar figure, whether it's like a mentor, we prorate it based on when we get the paperwork.
Mr. Zubers, not to beat the dead horse here, what was the district's liability?
I don't know that the, that the fact that they weren't approved by the board created any additional liability with respect to their interaction with students.
They were a teacher, that's one thing, what happened if they were not a teacher?
Again, I mean, as long as they had their Act 34 criminal background checks, or their, um, child abuse clearance statements, I don't know that that fact created any additional liability.
And so does that mean anybody with a child clearance could come in without being approved by the board and interact with their children? Like, that's pretty much how it seems to me.
That's not what I said, I just said that it didn't create any additional liability per se.
I was more concerned liability-wise, he's saying that it didn't create any liability, didn't say that the board didn't need to approve them.
Yeah, I def, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that it didn't create additional liability, that fact standing alone.
And what if the board didn't approve them?
Uh, they wouldn't get paid?
They just don't get paid, that's, okay.
And you know what?
As in the case right here, obviously, these people aren't getting paid until the board approves.
Correct.
Now, because they weren't brought forward before, at the time they should have been, and now they're being brought forward after, if a board member or the board had a problem with a few of these individuals, and we voted not to approve them.
They just don't get paid.
Sounds like an issue for the policy committee, or the policy, to make it black and white that they will not get paid if they work prior to board approval.
But what, I have, I have as a follow-up question, if we vote, if the one per, if there are all, say, five of them do not get the vote, is the program dead immediately then? Forget whether they get paid or not.
I guess that depends on whether they walk or not.
But then, no, if we don't approve them, are they still allowed to volunteer? In other words, are we voting then not to pay them, or are we voting not to do the program? Sorry, don't mean to complicate things.
Well, say, say there's a, a, say there's a competition, again, are they allowed to go to the competition?
If you, I mean, if you typically allow volunteers to go to these competitions and assist, then they, I don't see a distinction there. What you're voting on is just the, the, the extra, the compensation, I mean, that's distinguishing factor. So you're not, okay, so no, so we're not voting on them to run the program, we're voting on their compensation.
To pay them, they could still be a volunteer.
You're approving them for that, for that extracurricular position.
Okay. Now, would we need to approve that individual as a volunteer then, if he wanted to be a volunteer?
Which we do do.
We do do that as well.
So if we didn't approve him as a volunteer then either?
Then he would be kicked out, or he or she, or whoever.
If your policy is for the board to approve all volunteers, then they would not be permitted to- So, okay, so hypothetical question is, if they're not a volunteer and they're not paid, and they take the kids across state lines?
Well, can I make a motion to approve them temporarily as volunteers, do we get this pay thing figured out so we don't inhibit this program by no fault of the children?
You can do that.
We second it, so.
Okay, so now wait, we're back to-
I mean, we, I mean, it's-
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to hurt the program, but I, I'm, we have a, there is an issue. Okay, so it's 12.
12C2.
12C2.
B, D, F, G, I.
B, D, F, G, and I, okay.
You're gonna drag it down.
So no, wait, I'm sorry, it was-
Oh, especially if they got something on, yeah. No, but we need to get our internal administrative house.
Okay, we have a second, uh, any other additional comments?
Is this to approve them as volunteers until we vote?
Yes, unpaid volunteers.
Okay, this isn't a volunteer, until whenever it's a volunteer.
Temporary volunteer until we get the pay situation.
At that point, they cease being volunteers and become paid employees.
Right, all right.
To approve as temporary unpaid volunteers.
The motion would be that these people will be paid, these people, we, temporary volunteers until the pay situation is straightened out. And then following is 12C2, B, D, F, G, and I. So everybody understands that, everybody understands the motion?
Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Simonero?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough? Yes, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Potts?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed. I'm sorry, I was kinda phased out there.
You're waiting for yourself to answer? All right, uh, any other discussion on this issue? I think we got it covered now. 13A?
So move 13A, second.
Yeah, we have a first and a second. Any discussion by the board? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Simonero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes? Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, 14A through S?
A through E.
E.
So move, second.
Yeah, the rest are first readings. A through E.
Mr. Shaheen, and who's the second? Mr. Simonero.
Okay, any discussion? All right, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote?
Okay, so the motion is 14A through E with Mr. Shaheen first, and Mr. Simonero second. Mr. Simonero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes? Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, great. Um, 15, uh, there's none. Uh, 16, old business, how are we doing with the website page?
We're gathering all that information, we're going through it now, just wanna make sure it's all right before we post anything.
You think that'll be posted before the committee, the whole meeting?
Uh, it's a good chance, yes.
Okay. Uh, record retention schedule still open, has, has a-
No, I haven't moved forward on that one yet, we have to, that's gonna take a, a pretty huge undertaking, but, um, I've been actually been, got some advice from Mr. Zubers on that one, and, um, we'll have to actually propose that as a policy.
Okay. Um, any questions from board members as I'm going through these things? Okay, great. Uh, Title IX, obviously, we're gonna discuss this in executive session. Um, and D, uh, our athletic facilitator is here tonight to answer our questions concerning these items, the facility application fee, online forms, sports passes, and any other questions we might have for her.
Well, we didn't, as a board, decide to make an application for-
No, but I'm just saying, like, I think there was a bunch of questions that were coming up. One about, and let me just sort of summarize it for you, uh, I think there's some questions about, one, getting our hands on the information so that the Revenue Enhancement Committee can address different pieces of this. Um, something that also came up was, uh, how are the sports passes being handled, how much revenue's been generated, how are they being processed, i.e. punched at games, or are they not being punched at games, do people waive them, you know, when they go up and they get, get their tickets, or how, how is that thing being handled? Um, we discussed maybe putting our application fees, or for the, the, um, facilities up online, and what the process was in terms of approving those things, and, and maybe streamlining that. So we're interested to hear any kind of thoughts or questions you might have. Ms. Hamel, since you had most of the questions, if you have anything in specific you wanna bring to her attention, then I think now would be the time to do it so she can-
I did talk to our IT Director, Anne, and again, being used to using workflow where I work, we don't have the, we have the ability to workflow internally, but we don't have the ability to workflow externally. So that you, as the leader of the Girl Scouts, could not access in a workflow to processes document that would go from, from point A to point B, as it should.
But internally, we could.
Uh, yeah, but then, also, you gotta look at the amount of developmental time versus the dollars saved with processing 35 or 40 applications. It's not a, uh, with the constraints we have on our system, you know, we don't have a support central like some companies and some other things do, where, you know, it takes you 20 minutes to put a workflow together, and it routes to where you want it to, it's a fairly expensive endeavor with the system we have in place.
What is the cost?
I, I don't have development for that specific task. Um, my main concern was just the volume, we can start looking at workflow, but for 40 applications, I mean, that's-
You know, what's your developmental, you're talking more than a day probably to develop.
I was gonna say, probably a day or two, you know, until we test it, make sure everything's functional.
So, so, I mean, you, you talked about, if somebody's time up for two days to test it, you know, working for 40 applications, I don't think there's a lot of, there's no payback and stuff along that line.
Now, something, I'm sorry, okay, something we could do perhaps, set up an HTML page with just a text field, a text field, and put your name, why you want the buildings, and have that, and email out to Dr. Otto or a building, a building principal, it doesn't need to be a workflow.
Let me, let me interrupt this thought for just one second, we do have the athletic facilitator standing at the podium, so maybe we could talk about those issues, then we can come back to our IT stuff. Um, please, go ahead.
Did you wanna ask what you asked?
I didn't know if you prepared anything.
I did.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and see if the answers on my question?
Um, I was gonna talk about the event passes first. Um, they were purchased in February of 2009. Um, the, we purchased 2,000 tickets, 1,000 students, and 1,000 adults, for a total of $325.25. Um, from 2009 to 2011, event passes were priced at $20 for students and $40 for adults. Starting in 2011, event passes were priced $30 for students and $50 for adults, due to the increase in the single ticket prices that we increased to. Um, as of today, 64 student event passes were issued, and 142 adult, um, passes have been issued. Uh, there were five adult event passes that were given for, towards the high school United Way basket, um, that the buildings do for United Way at the beginning of the year. The student passes are yellow, the adult passes are blue. What happens is when they come to a game, there is a punch in the ticket box for the ticket tinker, has the punch, and they punch it, there's 10 punches on the card. And once that runs out, it's finished, they take it, the last punch, we throw it away.
Just to ask, have those colors been changed every year?
No, they, they haven't been changed.
That's your point, you purchase, you could purchase a pass in 2009, and you have 20 games to go to.
You have 10 games you gotta go to.
So you could go to one game in 2009, three games 2010, until you use your 10 games up. It's a, for, it's a 10-game pass, so it doesn't need to change every year because that, you have 10 games to go to.
And I feel, I mean, my personal opinion is, you'd be spending more money to change the color every year than you are getting for selling tickets.
Most people probably won't buy them if they only use four the first year, they probably wouldn't buy one for the second year if they only used four out of 10.
I mean, there are some people who just buy them for fall events, and they only come to four, but they keep it next year because they're coming again.
Ms. Goss, I was wondering, how many, I don't know if you have statistics on this or not, if you have data, for the number of people who purchased a card at one point, how many of them come back and buy another card? Do you know off the top of your head?
Um, I would say probably a little less than half. It, that's just off the top of my head, I mean-
There's also a chance that somebody purchased a 10-game card and never used all 10 games.
Yeah, correct.
You know, they either stop going, they graduated, they lose the card or something.
I mean, and if they come to me and they say, I lost it, you know, it's, sorry.
Yeah, I was surprised it didn't have an expiration on it. It was just, you buy it and that's it. So there could be ways for people just to come in and not really give a punch.
Well, no, they just say-
You have to pay money or get punched.
I know, but sometimes the line is long, they just walk in, I mean, I've seen that, where they don't go to the ticket booth, they just go right by it.
There's always a ticket. There's also a ticket taker, that, the doors are long, the passes where they bank.
I think part of the concern is that we're not getting 100% of our ticket money, so maybe just keep an eye on whether or not people are getting their ticket, from, from a number of people that have watched, people walk by and just wave and keep on going, so.
There are a lot of passes out there, like, not even, I mean, there's, of course, the coach's pass, but, you know, there's a lot of passes in first kind of period that-
So like, a coach's pass wouldn't get stayed, they, they can get in all the time?
That's hard, I think.
What other passes are there other than a coach's pass?
Um, there's a PIAA pass.
Who has those?
PIAA, um-
Officials?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I give my, I'm just saying, you're saying board members can go, but who else has a PIAA pass?
Um, they give passes to, say, you've been a coach for 20 plus years, um, they give a pass called a gold, a gold pass.
Uh-huh.
That gets you into everything. Um, I mean, there's, I can get a list for you if you need one.
Well, I'm just kinda curious, I mean, you know, if everybody's got passes and they're walking into the games, it's a little tough to administrate ticket sales, so, um, and I guess I'm just wondering who gets the PIAA passes and, and who doesn't, and who makes that difference?
It's a discretion, the district has discretion as to how they get a certain allotment, and then the district has discretion as to who has, who gets-
As to who has the passes?
I have one, if I travel, like, to Harrisburg for a playoff game, they'll let me into the game without paying. I mean, that's just the way they work.
That's not a district, like-
No, no, I get it, it's, it's-
But they're only good for, like, in District 3, it's generally only good, correct me if I'm wrong, because I think it's only for, like, playoff games, like, when you're gonna be traveling great distances and things like that.
Now, there's supposed to be a concern among some board members and some people in the public, from what it seemed at the Revenue Enhancement Committee meeting, that people, we, as Mrs. Hamel mentioned earlier, are just walking by, waving, flashing a card. I don't know what, how it works now, but does everybody, I know the rules are, everybody goes up to the ticket booth, they either show their pass, or show their card, or they buy a ticket. Is that being enforced now, or are people going by and walking right, and it seems to be that people are going by, and if they are, we need to make it clear.
Well, if they have a card, they can walk by the ticket booth, but there's another person.
Do they still, okay, so there's somebody else, so yeah.
And how do you know, not to be, how do you know that person didn't go out to the corner and come back in? I mean, I mean, I see that too.
You could have a ticket or a stamp or something.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, they were, okay, if the security guard sees, like-
I would be very careful.
The person, you know, the person, if I go into the stadium once, and there's a security guard, and I go out to my car, they're not gonna ask me for my card again, or my ticket or whatever, they might recognize me, or they might know that you already just went out to your car, so that could be what's going on too, when you see someone walk by, don't assume that they didn't pay. Assume that they went out for their car, they went up to high school, actually, during football games, they go to high school and use the restrooms.
Yeah, it's not a bad, I was just-
So how do you, you know, if a person goes and walks through again, does not mean they didn't pay.
If I could just make a, I'd be careful of generalizing over things like that with, um, I mean, I, I think the staff that's collecting tickets is doing the best that they can, given the, I mean, we don't have a, you know, you walk through a, a wide area sometimes. Can I, can I honestly say that 100% of everybody that's sitting in the gym has paid? We, we would like to think so, but I guess every once in a while, one or two are gonna slip through, but I don't think there's this epidemic of people sneaking into our games for free.
I don't think there's this big money dump out there.
No, 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 but I think it's an issue of perception, so it was, there was, there was, uh, an email sent to the board, you know, you know, making representations that certain people weren't paying going in, and, and now we're spending time as a board discussing it, when really, this is something that should be at an administrative level being taken care of. So when things ride to, rise to the level of the board, as far as I'm concerned, then, then maybe it's just, it may not be a fiscal issue, but it may be a perception issue, that maybe there's a better way of doing things that would-
Well, just assign it to the athletic facilitator and say, hey, review your policies, review your procedures.
That's the point I'm making.
And, 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 you know, find out if you can fight it up a little bit.
We just don't wanna have to talk about this at a board level, so if there's a way to, to improve the process so that it looks like everybody who's got a pass, or a card, or whatever it is that they got, is going through the proper, I don't know, funnel to get into a game, then maybe that's something you guys can consider, so that we're not getting emails as a board saying, look, so-and-so's not paying, and that becomes a favoritism or some other type of thing, and, you know, it just, matter of form over function, I guess. Um, any other comments from board members on this? Any other questions for her?
Um, the only thing I wanted to know was with the facility's use, and you fill out the form, when they hand in the form, do you put everyone who wants to use the facility on a sheet, like a spreadsheet, even if they're not paying, just so we know how many people are actually using the facility? Cause when I got a number of 46 people put in a form to use the facility, but then on the sheet, I only had eight names, so do you not write, do you write every single person's name down that's planning to use the facility?
Well, that sheet was several years ago.
No, no, we're talking about the new one.
What was done for you was a spreadsheet of those folks that actually received invoices of those 46. I believe what Goose does is she has a schedule tracker or something, that she lists everyone, and so we're not listing all of the forms for you on what you'd requested, or who would we actually bill. So that's the spreadsheet that you received as a board with the eight names. So out of those 46, eight folks were billed, but Goose would have on her tracker whenever those folks-
So, but I just wanted to know, if we decided to use a, a application fee of some sort, everyone would have to pay, so that would be 46 people would pay, rather than eight, it would be all 46.
Well, they, according to my understanding of the way you would like it to work, they would pay when they turn in that application.
Right, correct, so that would be-
Which is different, though, from what we're invoicing currently.
So if there's 46, and people that weren't to use the facility, but you only give it to E, is that what you're saying, like, no, I got, it was 46?
There were 46 applications at the point in time that I was asked, eight of which of those application actually had fees associated with them so far at this point. So there could have been, of those 46-
Thirty in either.
Some that didn't even happen yet, so we didn't invoice them yet, or some that are no fee, but you still would have put them on your schedule for years.
Yeah, I'm just trying, if we're, we're giving out 46, you know, slots to use the facility and only, you know, that's quite a few people, what do you know?
If we go down this path, I'd also like to know, because as I've discussed, I'm wholeheartedly against putting an application fee together for nonprofits and anything else, I'd also like to know our cost is the district to process an invoice, collect that money, cause that all needs to be netted out. There is a cost to submitting an invoice. Uh, it, it is what it is, and, and everybody knows it, but you can need to net that money. We're talking, oh, 46 people at $30, you know, 1,200 bucks rough numbers.
Even if we lowered it, just to have some type of cost balance or something.
No, what Mr. Shaheen's saying is, in order to send a $30 bill out, pay for the cost of the bill.
You're gonna send a $30, so you said the $30 bill's gonna cost us 50 or 20 bucks to do it, cause there is a cost to somebody submitting an invoice, there's a cost to processing an invoice.
Correct.
Internal, from our end. That cost needs to be netted out of whatever that, that money we're gonna get. When we get all said and done, we're probably gonna actually end up putting in our pockets less than half of that money.
Correct.
That we, we end up invoicing.
Correct.
I mean, again, I'm, I'm, I, you know, if, if it was a, you know, if there were 200 or 300 people, you know, using our facility, you know, I, I could see, you know, start looking now, but, you know, you're 46 people, and-
That's only half the year. I mean, at one time, 112- I mean, at one time, a hundred and twenty people used the facility in one year.
I think the only issue that, that came up for the Revenue Enhancement was, it was more an issue of wear and tear, right? So, if you, if your facilities are being used frequently, then their lifespan deteriorates at a much quicker rate than they would be had, had they not been open to, let's say, the public, correct?
But those large organizations, and we're going to run this around and around, because I'm at one end and you're at the other.
I'm not at any end, I'm just saying that.
Large organizations that use it, hey, okay, the Girl Scouts, or the Brownies, or the Daisies, or whatever else are occupying a classroom that hasn't been cleaned yet and, and, right after school, is not putting enough wear and tear on that classroom that, that.
I'm not worried about a classroom, but if you, if you open up the doors, we have to have a policy in place that's going to handle every situation, so if you open up the doors to say, hey, look, we're going to allow someone to teach something on our computer, uh, in our computer labs, right, and do a seminar there and teach classes and whatnot on computers, or you're going to open up the fields for use, like, we're having a problem that we always hear about at facilities regarding our fields and baseball in particular, that's a big deal, and it's been a big deal, it seems like, every single year, in terms of the amount of money it's spent repairing the fields and making sure the fields are ready for the next group of people that are coming in and so on and so forth. It's, I'm not talking about classroom here, or a.
Building check.
Well, we're already charging a, a usage fee for those facilities to offset the.
But we're not monitoring what the cost is to us to get it done.
Let's readjust our usage fee versus an application fee. If it's going to cost us, if we're charging baseball six hundred bucks and we're actually, we're, we're charging real time for our, our custodians.
No, 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 but, you know, what I'm saying is, if you're not charging, even if it's a nonprofit group, okay, it's a, it's a, something youth sports, okay, that's coming in and using our field, and it beats the field up, because they use it ten times in a season or whatever it is, okay, and it costs us five thousand dollars to fix the field, well, if you're only charging them a couple hundred bucks, then it's not, it's not in the best interest of the school district to, to lease the field to that particular organization, right? It, it's costing us money to host it, as opposed to not, but we don't know these numbers because we don't keep track of what the true costs are.
Yeah, but those parents or those kids who use those fields are probably taxpayers of this district.
So what? So what? There's taxpayers who don't use it, and they're paying for it too. At the end of the day, it's got to be available for the students, right?
I think the simplest way to revisit this problem is to take a look at the facility's use policy again. I mean, it's, everything's in there, you just, if you want to make changes in it.
Well, I think it's also tracking the cost, we're not doing that part of it too. And that's where revenue enhancement's coming in. I don't want to speak out of turn, but I'm not the only one that sits on revenue enhancement or had been, but when this issue came up, the issue was, are we tracking the cost to use these facilities? And in facilities, we had, I mean, you know, I'm not the only one that was at these meetings, we talked about what the costs were in, in terms of, um, different organizations coming in from outside and using these things, and whether we were charging them enough, and these are for-profit organizations too.
Well, then, then, you know, I.
We're not picking on the, the Girl Scouts and on the Boy Scouts and on the.
My, my concern is, we spend now fifteen minutes talking about something, we spent almost an hour last, last meeting going over something, that even if, if, if the wind to our back and the sun came up three times in one day, we're going to get two thousand dollars, maybe three thousand dollars, and for fifteen hundred bucks worth of hit on a field. I think that the revenue, and again, you know, I'm going to get jumped on, but the Revenue Enhancement Committee needs to be focused on big ticket items. I, I applaud them for bringing in, you know, even though I had some problems getting my answers out of them, the foundation issue, okay? Those are where we're going to make some money. That's where I think we need to focus our attention on, not, not charging thirty-five dollars for somebody to submit an application to, to use a room, or if the person's going to teach and they're going to use our computers or our computer lab, add thirty-five bucks to the cost of the fee if you want, bury it in there, but there's bigger fish to fry, and there's a lot more opportunity out there than, than to go after, you know, tickets that we're charging thirty bucks for, for ten games and want to expire them because a person didn't use it or something else. I, I just think that we, we, we lost focus of where we want to go.
And I, no, I don't think we did. I think the Revenue Enhancement Committee is there to look at those details, however big or small they are, because there aren't many big fish to fry.
There's a couple big fish to fry.
But, but, wait a minute, wait, so it's, it's, it's the responsibility of that committee to look at every little detail, turn over every rock, whether big or small, and if you guys reject it as a board, then so be it, reject it, move on to the next thing.
We got two big fish, nobody will answer.
But, no, we're looking at small things, we're, we're looking at everything. But I, but I think.
The committee's looking at everything. If you guys don't like it, vote, vote it down, let's move on.
I think, I think you're right, Mr. Member, but I think then it should go to billions of grounds and figure out what cost, if any, there are, and then Mr. Kurtz's policy committee should figure out whether he's a facility policy. We got three committees that work on one op, I, I.
Yeah, but at the same time, you need to bring it to a board level to find out whether it's got legs and.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm not disagreeing there, but I don't think we need three committees looking at one minor problem. We have Revenue Enhancement brought up, they should pass it on. Mr. Potts's committee has billion grounds, should determine, you know what, are we beating up the fields, are we beating up the buildings, are we doing this? If they are, and Mr. Kurtz, who is the policy, because we're looking at our policy, figure out our policy committee whether we should tweak that for, you know, people in our district or out of our district, that's a whole different thing, but I think now it should be passed on, I mean, like Mr. Sheen thought, I think what he's saying is, we, we have three committees now looking at one minor issue. Assign it to somebody. Let's assign it to one committee and that's it.
But I, I agree totally with what you're saying, there's, at some point, the Revenue Enhancement Committee.
Passes it on.
Passes it on and says, this is becoming, becoming a facility's issue.
And I think, and I think that's his issue right now. I think Mr. Potts, he asked to look at that and figure out whether we.
Let's bring it up, why don't we have some personnel come over, uh, to March fifth, and let's discuss that.
And you'll get that in your policy.
I think that was, I don't personally.
The nonprofits.
We already had a conclusion. We already had, I mean, again, again, maybe it's the way my mind works when I work through a problem. Potential problem, incorrect data, we're going to charge thirty-five bucks.
No, no, I think the issue was, a couple of years ago when we had the facility thing, was, we didn't know who was using it and when, and so we, we began to track that, but.
Two weeks ago, that this is a problem, this is our solution, and move on. I think you, you come up with something, pass it off to billions of grounds, let them see if we're doing it and move on.
Let's take it there.
And I think Mr. Kurtz.
It depends on the size of whatever this function is.
I sit on that committee, I listen to what his comments were, and he was saying it's difficult to keep up with the cost of the fields, it's difficult to keep up with everything else he has to deal with, and he was trying to figure out ways to save money so that he wasn't in the hole again.
In all respects, it's also due to what kind of function you're holding.
Right, if we're not charging enough money.
It could be a lot different from a Blazer Mac Club to an outside baseball.
There is, in terms of, I'm, I'm going to say it again, with the facility's use policy, you need to understand that we have a policy in there that for eighty percent of the people or more, I don't have the number offhand, that come to us, we give them the service because we believe in supporting the programs in the community that come and use our facility. If you want us to start tracking what those costs are and say we're going to waive them, we can do that, but your policy now calls for waiving those costs to those groups. If you want that to change, you have to change your policy.
Mr. Kurtz. If we had a list, you'd be surprised what those groups are, and I think we'd probably be taking a lot of that.
It's our category one, our category one is very clear who they are, it tells us who we shouldn't charge.
No, that's correct, and that's what we solved a year ago, because we weren't addressing that issue.
Correct.
And now the question is, in Revenue Enhancement is, what are the costs? And if we don't know what the costs are, we don't know whether it's worthwhile to waive those fees or not. It may only be a couple of bucks, it may be five thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars, and there was a number, hold on, there was, there was a.
It's not a revenue enhancement committee situation anymore.
There was a, there was, but the problem is, it goes from one committee to the next and never gets resolved. I mean, we had an issue with people talking about facility's use, and it was being referred to our Revenue Enhancement Committee. We did that a year ago or two years ago, right? And then the problem was, people would show up at the Facilities Committee to talk about a facility's use issue and whether or not revenues were being generated or not being generated, and we're talking not a few, a couple hundred bucks, we're talking somewhere around ten or twelve thousand dollars worth of cost, just for a couple of tournaments that were taking place. That's significant dollars, as far as I'm concerned. So, I don't care where it gets resolved, as, as far as, it just needs, it needs to be in one place, and it needs to be bird dogged down until we get to some sort of resolution on that.
The Policy Commission tier of policy, apparently billions of grounds should care of the cost, that's it.
Right.
It should be, it should, those two committees should figure out, one is, go ahead, Mrs. Penza.
I also have to, to just say that as being the one that puts the charges on there and looking at that policy and looking at the categories, if the people filling out the forms, and I know a lot of this is coming down with the fields, if there's a baseball tournament, and they're filling out the forms and they're putting that there's no fee, they're not charging anything, and they're part of the community, they fall into that category one, so they get no charge for the facility use.
Correct.
Is there a cost to us? Yes, there is.
If they're telling.
There definitely is.
People are telling.
There's a service that we're providing them.
People tell me that they're charging a hundred dollar fee or an entry fee, but if they don't put that on a form.
Correct. They'll take their word for it.
I can't do anything about it.
You take their word for it.
I have to go with what's in.
But like I said, I think we're, we have three committees on one issue.
All right. The Policy Review Committee will look at Policy seven zero seven, the use of school facilities at our next meeting, is a very, is a one-page policy, and it looks like it hasn't been updated since the eighties.
No, actually, we updated Facility's Use in two thousand and ten.
Yeah, we did.
We did that since I've been here.
What are the guidelines, under the guidelines? That's the actual.
My, 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 my point is, we, we found a problem, okay? Now, let's, let's push it on the committee and give us some data, like, just like Mr. McCullough said, and get the other committee that can change it, and, and, I don't, I think that's the right process to move.
Let's review the policy, let's get the list, and I think with the three, Dr. Otto.
That's fine, but if, if that's what we're going to agree to as a board, we didn't come to that agreement last, at the last meeting, it was, well, take it back to REC, and REC wasn't getting answers on the, on, on the data questions, and so it was kind of a, a kerfuffle, right? And then a whole bunch of other questions came up, which is why Ms. Goss is standing here for the last ten minutes.
I think, I think we thank the Revenue Enhancement Committee for bringing us our attention.
I'm not even sure, I mean, maybe somebody can answer the question, the baseball fields that are between the, the middle school and the church, I mean.
They're not ours.
But we administer.
They're not our.
All of that, we maintain those fields.
But we looked at those, and we can't necessarily charge a fee for fields that we can't.
That's correct.
It's been looked into, we can't, I'm pretty sure we can't charge a fee.
You talked to Chad.
Chad would have, Chad would.
Chaz has some input on, but it's our responsibility to schedule the fields, it's our responsibility to maintain the fields, okay?
Right.
So, if we're, if we're spending money to maintain the fields, it's our.
I'm not sure if you can charge a fee for those.
Well, why can't you charge a fee for that?
There is a license, I think we look into this.
There is a license, okay.
And, and that was because they were jointly developed, that wasn't our land.
No.
We just have a license to use that land, and, and that was.
For our, for our games.
Right, and in consideration of that, we maintain.
But does that mean that if, if the Youth Baseball Association or Danny Boone or somebody else want, Burke County want to use those, we can charge a fee for that? I don't believe you can.
I don't think we can.
I think we resolve that or whatever.
I think we are a resident of this.
I think we resented and the answer was no.
I think so.
I think you're right, I don't think we can charge a fee for that. Actually, I think Amity can.
Yeah.
Well, Amity's leaving it to us to administer the policy.
But they get the money. Yeah, but anyways, let's look at that, because, yeah, and I didn't mean to go down the rabbit hole in this, but.
Again.
Okay.
Moving on, I had one question for you, could you give us some good news regarding the soccer league, um, thing that came up with the, uh, sock, the Soccer Factory, and they're starting up a new league?
By our head soccer coach, Joe Reek, to look into facility usage, cost, and all that. I went back to him with the cost and everything. I hadn't heard back from him. He, I met with him Monday, and he wasn't sure why that email went out, um, as far as them using it, like, because the.
The decision hadn't been made yet?
Right.
Okay.
So, they are still in the process of, as a board themselves, coming up with where they're going to decide to go.
And that was kind of, I was put that in the category of a premature comment by that organization.
Yeah, well, I mean, if there's a potential for them to use the field, I think it's a good opportunity for us to, to leverage that relationship to the benefit of the district, one way or another.
We're going to charge them wear and tear of our field.
Well.
No, I'm just referring more to wording the bullet that I saw.
When I'm talking about advertising and all, a bunch of host of different things, you're going to have people attending these events who are going to be excited about watching the soccer games taking place, and there's an opportunity to market that to our, to the benefit of the school district, so.
Are we, are we, I'm sorry, we're talking about, can I have a question about another issue, I don't know if it's under this, getting back to, I guess, quote advertising, there's a local school district doing it in the inside of school buses, I thought we couldn't do that.
If you own the buses, you can.
Is that what it is?
We don't own our buses.
There's a local school district, it's in the paper.
Do you remember the name?
I told, we talked about this, three times.
Yeah, we brought this up.
Yeah, can we do that, they're doing it in the inside of the buses? Mr. Juvers, you're doing it in the inside of buses?
I'd have to come back.
Can you, again, I'm sorry.
It's been a while, I mean, I'd have to pull out.
There's another one for Revenue Enhancement.
I probably should have run it on.
No, you did.
We, we looked at this before, but we were told you can't on the outside, but this is on the inside.
Actually, I think Pennsylvania.
Oh, you know what, I think that, that was.
We could do it on the inside, but we didn't own.
You can't do it on the outside.
We don't own our buses.
We don't own our buses.
Okay, so Revenue Enhancement, maybe we want to look at that. Now, you want to look at that, Revenue Enhancement?
Well, we did look at it, I know when, I used to sit in the audience and listen to Revenue Enhancement.
That was during Mr. Bezos' inaugural term, and it was, if we wanted to put a plaque on the outside of the bus, and state regulations said that the letters had to be so high, you couldn't.
Yeah, we also wanted to have, yeah, that's true, we weren't going to do it on the outside and on the inside.
I'm asking the committee to look at doing it on the inside.
There was a, there was a, yes, you, I'm actually trying to find it, you.
But that was on the outside, again, I'm not saying outside, I'm saying inside.
I just found here, they expect three hundred thousand dollars annually.
There you go.
Right.
And if we were to split that with our partners.
We don't own our buses, so just be careful.
And I want to, I want to do Parkland, though, there was a.
There was initially around a hundred and fifty, and then if they got that release with all their buses.
So can someone please look into, can we assign some committee to look at the possibility of doing it?
Okay, just asking a question, sorry, Mr. Bezos, I mean, you're walking with the
engine.
Good question, well, one of my questions for you, Ms. Goss, before you leave, was, um, I know Mr. Legath was sort of handling, like, advertising and, and sort of marketing of our facilities, so to speak, well, I don't know if he was actively doing it, but he was, um, when somebody had a question, can we advertise, he was the one that things were being directed to, is that now sort of fall into your, into your domain?
Um, when I first came on board, I, being a local, I went to a number of people that I knew in businesses, trying to get them to advertise on the stadium, because we only have two banners up there. The feedback that I got, that it was way too expensive. Um, so, I mean, my personal opinion is, it is expensive, and I think if it's changed, we will get more sponsors for the banners on the stadium. But, that's just my personal opinion, and that's just talking to business people in the community and outside of the community.
Do you know how much it costs?
It's three thousand dollars, I think.
I think they only pay a couple hundred bucks for the, the, the ones at Hill Road in the baseball, they don't pay, the ones that are in the outfield, they don't pay a couple hundred bucks for each one of those for the baseball season, so, I agree with you.
One of the things we talked about, it, it was bundling, uh, Revenue Enhancement, so, if you pay three thousand dollars, maybe not only do you get a banner at the stadium, but you get advertising on our website as well, type of thing. And so, this had to do, or advertising in the schools somehow, and then that hit a, a block wall with the whole issue of advertising in schools, so.
I'd like to have.
It's a multifaceted issue, do you have any other questions for Ms. Goss? Thank you, appreciate it.
May I quickly ask, advertising on the website, I know this was brought up last year or the previous board, if we were to take this to Revenue Enhancement, would this be a no-go from the start, advertising on the district website?
No, the, the, the problem was not with the board, those board members, A, are gone, and B, we're getting to IT Director, so, I mean, it's, it's.
I suggest you go back to that.
I think it goes back, it'll get again, because.
So it's worth looking at?
We have a local community.
The issue that came up when we looked at it in Revenue Enhancement was that the, um, the company that would push the advertisements could not guarantee.
Unless we want static ads.
Static ads from locals?
Right.
Yeah, I, we did some of that, right, we have some prototypes of, like, CJ Tires and stuff up on, on our prototype website that shows those ads.
Yeah, but I'm saying, if you, I mean, I talked to Ms. Conlon, and she said, there, people are coming to her, to add, put ads, if you look at the community.
People are going to who?
Everywhere, Stephanie Conlon, down the sides across, and she said, they're adding them all the time, and people are coming to her continually to add, she's not out there shopping ads, I mean, they're coming to, you look at the Boyertown website, I mean.
Is she charging them anything?
Yes, sure.
Not all of them.
She is, not all of them.
Some that, I know some that are doing it free.
Yeah, but, I mean, you look at the Boyertown webpage, I mean, they're just loaded with, with ads, and, and they're static, yeah, you're right, because they go and you look at the cookies, and if, 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 if somebody's at the wrong site or something, all of a sudden, your kid pops up and he's getting the wrong, wrong ad being popped up, there's an issue, but these are static local ads.
I think the static local ads took sort of a, a backseat when, um, when we lost Mr. Jacobs.
Right.
And, uh, he, he was a regular attendee at the REC meetings, and he was working with, giving us some prototype, uh, screens on what those ads would look like, and then once we lost him, and we were sort of in flux with an IT person, um, it kind of fell off the edge, so it should.
I think we need, I mean, it's something that they can put some, some big bucks in. I mean, that, well, that's a good, even the point, you know, if you go to the Reading, Reading Eagle dot com website, and the first thing that pops up is a Reading Royals ad, and you got to click it, close it, and again, you know, people are going to get upset, they see that, and all of a sudden they realize, well, it's bringing in X number of thousands of dollars per year, they'll get over it.
Okay, any other, uh, issues on whole business? Okay, new business, we have a discussion to appoint the delegate and alternate to the Act thirty-two, TCC Committee. If you guys will recall, this sort of has to do with a consolidation of the Burke CIT, and, um, a lot of municipalities actually have their, um, Burke CIT representatives as the TCC reps as well, in this particular case, in Daniel Boone, we didn't do that, um, I was the, uh, Burke CIT rep, and Mr. Ross was the TCC rep. So, we can do it any way we want, um, if somebody wants.
It makes sense to make it the same person, doesn't it?
Who is our CIT rep, I guess, I'm sorry.
Uh, Burke CIT is Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
And they don't meet all that often, do they?
They meet quarterly.
Make a motion to appoint Mr. Wolf?
Ha ha!
Did Mr. Wolf want it?
Sure.
I mean, they dovetail one another, I mean.
Yeah, they do, it makes sense.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
We're going to get the same motion.
Oh, we got to do it second.
Okay, uh, can we get a roll call, though?
I'm sorry, who did the first?
Do we need to vote on this, or we just appoint him?
Disappoint a second.
Do you vote on another appointment?
Yeah, we do vote on the other appointment.
We vote on the Burke CIT, okay.
On this is the EIT, I would vote on the EIT.
Well, this is, no, the EIT we voted on, this is the TCC, which quite frankly, is only, I don't even think it's meeting.
And they did vote back in two thousand nine.
Yeah, we did.
All right, let's vote on it.
Okay, everybody understand, it's seventeen A, and this is Mr. Wolf, who's represented first, by Mr. Sheehan, second, by Mr. Potts, Mrs. Hamel.
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Simonero.
Yes.
And Mr. Bezos.
Yes.
Motion pass. I guess we need an alternative, an alternate? Do we need an alternate?
Says alternate.
Yes.
I used to do it, I'm not sure that, I mean, I wasn't here, yes.
Yeah, I was the alternate.
Yeah, I think, I think.
You voted the alternate.
Mr. Bezos started the alternate.
Mr. Bezos, Mr. Bezos is the alternate.
I'll be the alternate, I don't have a problem with it. Oh, do you want to do it?
No, I mean, I would.
I mean, I've been there, done that, I don't need to go do it again.
But with college coming up, I'm not sure, so, I, I, maybe I could go to two meetings or three, but the fourth one I would have to step down.
Well, it's only if Mr. Wolf.
So you don't make it.
Doesn't go.
So you tell me when you have funds, and I would.
Wait a minute, though, okay, is the first and second, we're going to switch.
No, if, if, I don't care, if Mr. Bezos wants to do it, I'll put it in.
I don't want to do it, I'm doing it.
There was a motion and a second, they have to pull it down.
Wait a minute, I first, I want to put first second.
I withdraw my name.
No, wait, hold on, hold on, I put the first up, and Mr. Sheehan.
He withdrew his name, though.
So he withdrew his name.
So I, I make a motion for Mr. Kurtz.
And I second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Okay, now it's Mr. Kurtz, okay. Uh, Mr. Kurtz.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Simonero.
Yes.
And Mr. Bezos.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Kurtz.
Okay, so moving on to seventeen B, foundation, I guess I just, we didn't really, we just took information, and I just wanted to bring it up again, if there's any thoughts or, uh, additional discussion that we wanted to have on this issue, and how would the board like to move forward, so the REC has some direction on this, um, or if it even needs to go back to the REC.
Well, I, I had the question that we were going to ask Brian, that if we decide to go with a foundation, or an organization that formed a foundation for us, that we need to put a, an RFQ or an RFP out, because there is a charge, and he does charge us for his professional.
It's a service, so it doesn't have, it's not subject to any DIT requirements, or RFP requirement, no legal requirements.
Mr. Bezos, was he the only one that was willing to come in and speak with us?
Um, yeah.
Two years ago, I had brought in a gentleman, um, from Penn State named Bob Potter, he and Bob New run in the same circles, the, these foundation groups, um, Bob Potter's based out of State College, I believe he came to Revenue Enhancement, he drove all the way down from State College one night. He will probably tell you about the same thing, I don't know that his scheme of doing things is quite the same as Bob New's, but I think anybody that is worth their salt, quite frankly, in the area of foundations, that doesn't tell you you need a dedicated executive director, you might as well forget about him.
I'm not disagreeing, I just, maybe it was the way I was asking, maybe it's.
You're asking if there's other organizations out there, and whether we should be talking to them.
My problem was, I had problems getting a straight answer from him when I asked the question, and that concerned me a little bit, and I know Mr. Potts was, we talked about this, I mean, that when you ask a question and twist it around, you didn't get a straight answer out of it, I was a little concerned with it.
I'd like to have a guarantee.
I would like to see a proposal that says, here's exactly what I'm going to do, if you hire me, I'll do these things, at this cost.
I could, I could bring, I'm sure Bob Potter would be willing to come back if you want to hear a second voice.
Yeah, I would like a second person now, uh, for both.
I'm still in touch with him, emails me once in a while.
They're asking us to put front money up there, and there's no guarantee we'll ever get it back. And this second, with how many times, I'm very lucky now. Yeah, I'm very lucky to put seat money up and not guarantee, not to think you're 100% guaranteed, but, there's no proposal, there's no game plan, it was just a five million.
You're like I'm buying a used car.
Well, I think, I think the issue, in, in full fairness to him, he spent a good hour with the Revenue Enhancement Committee, and so four board members already sort of, actually more than that, because it was, four board members plus some people that were in the audience at the time that weren't board members, but now are, had already gotten the quote-unquote pitch, so, um.
Can I have another question, didn't he start a local one?
He started several.
No, what's, what's most recent one?
Phoenixville, why missing, there was like five or six, right?
What's the one that's recent, why missing, right? And that's been up, I would find is, if it's been up for like, three to four months, can we have their executive director come in and.
Great Valley, I think, was one.
Great Valley's just getting started.
Can we commit, can we ask their executive director to come in and find out?
We can ask for, uh, references.
I'm sorry?
We can ask him to.
We should ask Bob for references.
Yeah, but I'm also asking how things are going after three, four months.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Give us names, give us references, that we can call it.
Obviously, they seeded money too, how's it going so far?
Andrew, why, why don't you call the board president for why missing, the board president, the board president, and say, hey, look, we're looking to do this thing, are you guys satisfied with what you've got?
Can you, can you have our executive director, even at Revenue Enhancement, I don't mean, you know, if you guys want to do it that way, but I think ask them how they're experiencing, are they, are they raising money?
You bring in their executive director, you're going to get one side of the story. If you ask the board president or the superintendent from why missing, how they, what their feelings were, maybe you get a little bit, come back with a little bit of different spin on.
Is it welcome in their community and foundation?
I think they're all good, I, I think they're all great ideas, and we should pursue them all, I also, you know, again, at the same time, I think we should ask Bob, you know, let's, let's get a little bit more black and white, you know, give us a proposal of what you, what you will do, and what the fee will be charged.
Give us a list of references.
I'd like a list from Mr. New.
He can give us a contract and give us a list of references, and the committee can follow up, um, on that contract and on those references.
And if you could have the gentleman from State College, maybe we do another one.
I want a list, I want a paper for Mr. New and for Mr. Potter, saying, we give you this much money, the district gives you this money, and this is what we expect in return, we want you to, this is what you'll do, I will, this, you'll do this, you'll do this, you'll do this, I want to know what we're getting for our money.
But on the other hand, I think everyone should be, you know, if, if a district is going to fund this, then you have to understand that it's not guaranteed that you get money back.
Yeah, but I would know, by paying him for a service, I would know what services he's renting.
That's true, I'm just saying that, you know, it, the existing foundation was funded by booster source organizations, and they didn't get their money back.
Correct, I'm not asking, I'm not asking for 100%, I'm asking is, how ones that were started in the last six to eight months, how they're doing.
That's why I'm saying, have them contact.
How they're doing, correct, how they are doing in the second.
There was like, four or five that he gave them.
But I'm saying, they're low, but contact.
No, they're local, but I'm saying, you could talk to one that just started, one that's been in place for a year, one that's in place for five years, you know.
And let's get a district similar to Daniel Boone, too, in terms of.
I don't think that really matters as much.
I'd like to see the relationship between these districts, how they're competing, if there's three close together, are they all receiving the amount of fund, or is one greater?
Well, how about you guys do this, everybody who's got a question about it, put it on an email, send it to the chairman of the REC, Ms. Hamel, and that way she can put a list together, and then, you can turn, can share that with Dr. Otto.
Yeah, we'll do the research.
Who will then contact Bob New and, and Mr. Was it?
I would recommend that you have Bob Potter back here to talk to the board.
Absolutely, yeah. Two people are better than one.
I'll, I'll see if he's available, and we'll get him maybe to the REC first, see what he has, he, he keeps in touch with him, he wants to know, you know, how we're doing.
Okay, all right, so that was my, I just wanted some direction as to where we're going on that issue as opposed to just sitting, um, so, you know what you're going to do then, for Revenue Enhancement on this issue?
I'll probably talk to Dr. Otto, find out if, uh, he's going to have Bob Potter come.
Well, I'm telling you that, we're going to do that.
He's going to go.
I can, I just need to make the contact.
I'll get a list of questions from the board.
And then we want to contract.
We're not going to wait, though, on asking Bob to give us his.
No, you got, you got, you can go.
Because this is paralysis through analysis here, I mean, this, we're talking at least two to three months now.
Correct.
So REC's one month, and the next month a board.
Correct.
And quite frankly, this CITC thing, we want to get this done before June, so we want to move on this lickety-split. Keep going.
Yeah, get, get Bob New to give us a proposal, at the same time we can talk to, to the other Bob.
And quite frankly, we can review the proposal before the next committee, the whole meeting.
Just send it out.
From Bob New. Okay, all right, um, Mr. Kurtz, you had an issue with grievances.
Okay, I was thinking, I was sitting at home, and I was thinking about all the issues that we're facing as a district, and other districts are facing across the Commonwealth, and I feel like we have, we can have a powerful voice if we choose to use it as a school district. Um, there are a lot of issues facing education in Daniel Boone and across the state, across the state, and a lot of them have to do with funding, a lot of them have to do with mandates, a lot of them have to do with taxation, and I believe that it would be beneficial to the district and to taxpayers and to students and to everybody, and to, really, everybody to tell, to get a list of everything that we have a problem with, and formally pass a resolution that says list, and then we'll send it to our, well, not Congressman, I guess maybe Congressman, the governor, the Secretary of Education, leaders in the State House, leaders in the State Senate, our state representatives, the ones who are supposed to listen to us, and let them know the Daniel Boone area school district formally is telling you that we have significant problems with what's going on, and we would like you to address these issues. Again, we have a powerful voice if we choose to use it, it's, some might say it's symbolic, but if we can get any, if we can let these people know that we're not, we're, we're suffering.
I, I'm not opposed to it, but again, I was sitting here talking to Mr. Potts, we've done this, they get them, they acknowledge them, in fact, years ago, we were one of the first districts, Mr. Sheehan to speak up, we were one of the first to ever write someone different resolutions, I'm not opposed, but I would ask that Mr. Mr. Zupers write the po, the thing, but again, I think it's a great idea, but it doesn't get too far in that we've done them.
We get press, we get press, and it goes.
For ten years, we've done them, and some of them, we were the first districts in the state to write to someone, some mandated issues, and again, I'm sorry, I don't remember, Mr. Sheehan, maybe you do, and they read them, they acknowledge they got them, and then basically, it sits there, more or less, and I'm not, I applaud your effort, but again, and I'm not opposed to it, but, one is, get your thoughts together, and I would ask Mr. Zupers, from a legal point of view, to write it not.
Okay.
Uh, anything like that as a resolution that we're going to sign that as a board, I would ask that Mr. Zupers write the, write it.
The unfortunate, the unfortunate reality of the situation is, they don't care.
They, yeah, they, I mean.
I mean, that's the unfortunate reality.
I understand. I think it's better that we as a board try, and let them.
Should you tell them when you really want to acknowledge it, you want to acknowledge it in two years right before election, then they're more likely to even answer it, you send a resolution now or after election, they're going to take it, okay, I got it, but when they're running again, then they'll at least answer your, your resolution that they got it, but right now, they're probably not even going to acknowledge they received it.
Well, I think there's a way you can, you can, you can do that, it's, it's about tactics, so, you know, if you're going to make a big deal out of it, and you contact the press and say, look, we're issuing this proclamation or whatever, resolution's going to XYZ representative, and then when you don't get a response, you hopefully put it in the press again, so-and-so, Representative so-and-so is ignoring Daniel Boone's pleas or whatever, but you have to have cooperation from the press.
Correct.
To kind of get that out there, unless we're going to issue press releases that the press then has to publish, and nobody, no politician wants bad press, right? So that may be another tactic, I mean, I've tried personally, I met with Senator Rafferty many occasions, asked him to come to the board, he's told me, no, no uncertain terms, will he come in front of his board and, and have those discussions, he's here to dedicate buildings, he's here to hand us checks when he has them, but he's not going to come in here and get beat up over things he doesn't necessarily have control over, so, um.
And even, and again, I agree with Mr. Bezos, but what they'll say is, you have to acknowledge it, we're looking into it, we'll get back to you, and, you know.
But you got to hold their feet to the fire.
Yeah, you got, and so, again, it's not a bad idea, but.
Let Mr. Zupers write the resolution, if you want to give him a sample. Let Mr. Zubers write the resolution if you want to give him a sample.
Yeah, sure, I, I wrote this up and if you can incorporate these ideas and bring it back to the board.
Get rid of about 500 wear asses. No, he does four widths.
Just to...
He gets big more...
To tag one to your, to tag one to your, your thought there, I would suggest, and this is not just for, for you, but for the rest of the board and us as administrators, the powers that be listen to their constituents.
There you go.
And I urge this, the first two years ago, when people came to the podium and I said, you need to write letters, we gave them a template letter, that should never stop because it hasn't gotten any better, if anything, it's gotten worse. So, to the people sitting out here and to the people that are listening to them, tell two friends, tell two friends, tell two friends. We're a vested interest, they don't listen to us, but they're people, they vote for them, they do listen. And I've heard from the inside that they do care about people that write letters to them.
And actually, that would be better, coming from nine people or whatever, 21,000 people versus...
I don't, I'm not opposed to the resolution, I'm just saying it's probably more powerful from individuals in the community than it is from a body like this.
Can we then take this resolution after we all sign it and put it, and after we submit it, can we then put it as an open letter to the editor that, hey, this is what Daniel Boone School Board sent it to Mercury, sent it to Reading Eagle?
That's de minimis.
No, I have a question, Mr. Zubers, can we put a, can we, can we draft a resolution and put it on our website and have taxpayers download it, print it and email it?
Sure.
So, we write a resolution to taxpayers, because I work in the medical field and trust me, I was asked by my organization to have patients come in and sign Medicare cuts and if you hand out the paper, they do sign it and send it in. So, basically, you could have taxpayers download a PDF file with a Word doc or whatever, Word document, saying this is what it is, they print it out, they sign it, there's no cost to us except put on the website, they mail it...
Just put it out there, DVTA is always looking.
They mail it out, it will be more than the nine of us coming from 2,000 people in Daniel Boone versus nine board members, it'll be 2,000 more people, probably better. It's just a thought, or in conjunction with the resolution or instead of the resolution.
Yeah, a lot of this, it's not just to let them know, it's also to let other people...
Well, that's what I'm saying, so I would put it, if you could do it that way, probably is better, like this, like I got her said, coming from taxpayers is probably better. They're just looking at us as distraught people trying to fix away with their budget.
Okay?
That's what I'm saying.
We're good on that?
All right.
Okay. Um, let's see here, anything else on our new business? Okay, anyone for the public, have an issue they'd like to address the board with?
Mr. Sheehan on there before, you said about a test. Is that, that overall test, is that something that schools can test the whole course, just to take that last test?
No. No, you're talking about the...
Keystone.
The Keystone exams?
Well, I, I thought it was a graduation test.
No, no, it's, it's the Keystone exams, they're trying to emulate, New York State has something called a Regents exam, where at the end of every year, it was a state test that was put together by the State Department of Education, the Regents as they call them, and it was your final exam.
Oh.
Okay, and...
And you had to pass those, right?
You had to pass it. If you didn't pass, you didn't get credit.
They were high stakes tests.
Okay, I, I thought it was...
And every class from ninth grade on, that was your reading, including your language, you had that test you had to take. Pennsylvania's several years behind, but they're trying to get, I see them trying to get into that direction with the Keystone exam. The problem is, they're passing the cost of the Keystone exams down to the districts and, and part of the reason they probably delayed it is that they can't go and get blood from the stone, so...
Well, I think the issue with the Keystone's is, they want to do away with the PSAs and replace them with the Keystone exams, and they're trying to come up with some sort of uniform testing system so that kids in western Pennsylvania are passing the same bar, so to speak, as kids in, you know, eastern Pennsylvania, southern, northern, that there's, at least a bar's been set in terms of the level of education all kids in Pennsylvania are getting, right? And so, they want to test the children to make sure that they're passing those bars of proficiency before moving on to the next level and ultimately graduating. And so, this is something Secretary Tomals was touched on the other day, that they were trying to, I believe they're trying to implement this in multiple grades and now they're scaling it back and just trying to introduce it in one grade at a time and phase it in over a period of time and then phase out the PSAs, the PSAs at the same time.
They're just reading math and biology, I mean, they went...
Well, they were trying to get multiple courses and now they're, they're scaling it back just to, you know, reading and math and...
Right. Well, it's based on the finances of it, too.
Right. So, does that answer your question? Okay.
And the other part of your good news that you had there, it's basically what I was going to say there, you know, I really wish that would get out to the public, the fact that what the governor has cut again, I mean, the public, I haven't talked about the yelling public, it comes twice a year, it wasn't yelled, you people, about the taxes going up, not coming to any other, other meetings to realize just why their taxes are going up, but the fact that, as you had said, they do have a good amount of people out there that can go to the governor and use can, and these are the people that need to not come here, well, not, not, very much come here, but should concentrate on the fact that their taxes are going up 80% right now because of what the governor's doing. Get up there, if you want to be occupied or whatever you will call, get up there or with a, with a letter, an email, or just go up there and holler like, come here, and hit the governor. I think it's going to go a whole lot better results.
Thank you.
Richard Martin, 025 West Coast Drive. Three quick things, Andrew, I've also had several discussions with Senator Rafferty, he seems to have gone into punch pile mode and just washed his hands of everything. On the other hand, my wife and I and David Holland Poole, we had dinner with Representative Maloney not too long ago and had a long discussion about property taxes, state mandates and all that sort of thing. He who has to run every two years for reelection, I think he'd be hard pressed to turn you down if you invited him here to speak.